Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, 18, in Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we will post a recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. My name is Russell S. Fox, Chairman. We also have Vice Chairman Douglas Mogulyn, Select Board Member Joe Didi, Carl Steinhardt, our Chief Administrative Officer. We have Cindy Pendleton, Administrative Assistant, and it looks like we have various other people, officials, and the public joining our meeting.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I didn't click record fast enough. Just need to get the date of Tuesday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM for the Board of Selectmen meeting. Sorry.
Okay, I repeat that. This is the meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board. It is Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, approximately 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand so we could do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for messing that up. With that, the first thing on his agenda is to reorganize the Select Board, and I will accept a motion to do that. Would someone like to make a motion to reorganize?
I don't know. I mean, Doug's pretty busy, I'm pretty busy. You know, you're the one that ain't doing too much lately, so Douglas, what are you thinking? You got time, Doug?
It said...
I don't think he's gonna make a very good Zoom guy. I mean, if you roll reversal, and he sure as hell doesn't look good in a dress.
The Chair will make a motion for Mr. Mogulyn to be the Chairman, Mr. Didi to be the Vice Chairman, and Mr. Fox to be the Clerk.
Is that legal?
It's legal tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
I can't abstain, huh? Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you're in charge. I'm just the Clerk.
You've been waiting two years to say that. Well, first of all, the town and the Board owe you a great debt of thanks for the effort that you put in, especially since having the term extended and everything that's been going on in town since March, and all the responsibilities that came with that since the March timeframe. So, thank you very, very much for all the extra effort that you put forth through this whole mess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Joe, you can't say that anymore.
Say what?
You're just the Clerk.
Oh, mentally, I'm just the Clerk. It'll take a couple of weeks to get out of that role.
Great. And this is probably the largest Selectmen, Board of Selectmen meeting we've had in a while, too. So, it is 6:05, so we'll entertain any public comments. Public comments are directed to the Board for comment. We generally don't reply back to comments until we've had a chance to do a little research, but if you have anything that you'd like to say to the Board, let me know, and you'll get your opportunity to do so. Anyone?
Could I say something? Is that possible?
You are our state senator, so yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and I really appreciate you folks allowing me to get on here. What I really wanted to do, and what I've been up to since I've been elected, or sworn in, I should say, is going around to the 11 cities and towns and just checking in with folks, government officials, as well as just residents and constituents. And, you know, it's a real honor to represent Southwick right now. It was just a really cool process last week, right? The town meeting, all my days go together right now. It's been a busy time period, but I just want everybody on the Board to know, to view me as an ally. Anytime issues come up, whatever it may be, whatever's out there, please don't hesitate to contact me. I come from the school of thought that says when we're working together, you know, local, state, and federal government is working together on the same page, we get a lot more done. So, really, that's all I wanted to say, is just to say hello, glad to be here, glad to be your state senator, and I really look forward to working with all of you and then representing all the great people in Southwick. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Carl, I just cleared 6:15 on our agenda.
Well, we should confirm with the Senator that he doesn't want another time.
We also have an appointment for you at 6:15.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. I apologize.
No worries at all. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the Select Board at this time?
This is Celeste Saint-Jacques.
Hello, Celeste.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Doug on being the new Chairman, and I know you're gonna do an amazing job.
Anyone else? Great. Okay, so 6:05, public comment, 6:10, close enough. Is BK concessions here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, that's Bill H. Great. Mobile food cart issuance of a common victor's license. Do you want to give us the quick nickel tour?
Yeah, just have a 22-foot mobile concession trailer, be doing probably hot dog hamburgs, frozen foods, to be determined, and, you know, partnered up with Smokey Water Rib Company. Soon to be waiting on licensing from the town, that's it.
I met with him several times and scared him in every direction he needed to go, well aware of his operation and the folks who saw him.
Mr. Fox?
Are you gonna be setting up in just one location, Bill? Or are you gonna be going at several different locations?
Yeah.
What are your hours gonna be?
That's still to be determined as well. You know, I got catering, pretty much we're a mobile kitchen, we can do whatever, and we'll be on private property most of the time. I mean, I'm not looking to set up on the side of the road or anything, so.
Any additional questions?
Nope.
I guess I look for a motion for that, to grant that license.
I'll make a motion for BK concessions, mobile food cart, that is your common victor's license.
Motion by Mr. Didi.
Mr. Fox will second it.
Mr. Fox seconds. Roll call vote. Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank all of you.
No problem. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you all.
Okay, next item is action items. Confirmation for proposed adult-use marijuana establishment application. Carl, you have some color on that one?
Yes, this is the process form that has been received by the Cannabis Control Commission. Of course, they are looking for us to have the Board just acknowledge that the applicant was, Pistols and Calyx has done everything in the Town of Southwick, which they have. I had the planner confirm it. The Board and myself and Town Council did the host agreements, they've done their community meetings, so they've met all the requirements. So, this is just something for the Board to acknowledge and confirm, and authorize the Chair to sign off and submit it to that state agency so that they can go on to the final steps of the process of opening up and citing here.
So, they've already received their special permit from the Planning Board?
Alan said they were all set. I sent him an email, and he confirmed they were all set.
Joe, do you remember that part?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, what's happened here is, this is probably, I'm not gonna pull me exactly, maybe a year and a half ago now, it's been a while, they went in Board of Appeals, and we did their building a couple of times, remember all that?
That I remember.
Yeah. Then they went to planning, and I believe they were all set with planning, and now what's happened, it's been so long, they had to go back to Board of Appeals because it actually ran out, they gotta renew, and I don't think you can do that three times, you can only do that twice. But I guess the state was really dragging their feet overall, so now it sounds like the state, according to this, is moving forward, so they need our blessing, and if we don't do a blessing, I think it automatically happens in so many days anyways, if we do not act on it at all.
Yeah, 60 days. It defaults after 60 days, but this will allow them, if you acknowledge it tonight and authorize the Chair to sign the municipal response form, then we can get this into that state agency, and why make somebody wait for two months when you've already endorsed this, and it's already gone through the process, the Planning Board, and all the other agencies?
Correct. Just as long as everybody's weighed in that they did everything they needed to do, I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
I guess we need a motion for the Chair to sign this document.
Yep.
I'll make that motion for the Chair to sign the...
Response form.
Response for the marijuana establishment application.
Yep.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
Amended Police Department use-of-force policy. This is from Lieutenant Robert Landis. This is a modification to the policy that we had just, this is an interim policy, subject to the use of, modifying the use-of-force policy that we had just adopted scant two or three months ago. And the short story is, it imposes, or puts forth, a duty to intervene by any officer to intervene when they recognize that another officer is acting contrary to law or Southwick policy, Southwick police policy.
And you are the Police Commission, and you get 30 days to act on these unless you ask the Chief for an extension?
I believe what he said, that request the Board to review the order and allow for it to be incorporated in the recently accepted use-of-force policy, which we had already accepted, so this is a singular purpose and modification to that policy. Does anyone have either a motion to table this to the next meeting, or would like to act on this immediately?
I'd like to make a motion, Russ Fox, to act on it immediately.
And accept the policy, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Didi?
I'm fine with that. I was like, get that motion.
Okay. Roll call vote. Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. WIC 338, proposal for temporary drive-in movie theater.
I think I'm unmuted.
Yep, you're off.
Good evening, everybody, and happy Father's Day related to all the youth ending. We're looking at, you know, the last couple of three years, we've hosted the fireworks for the Southwick Civic Fund, and it's been, it worked out well. It's been great, the town loves it, we keep growing that way, and of all of the years, we probably need it more than ever right now. Unfortunately, it has not been a great year for fundraising by anybody, and we felt collectively between the WIC 338 and the Southwick Civic Fund, this might be a way to put a little liveliness into the facility on Friday night and gain some revenue to make sure that we have a great fireworks display, and that's really what we're looking for.
So, do you have, we had a document here with a kind of a plan of attack for this, correct?
You do. You have the dates intended, and of course, you know, that's subject to change with weather and all of that. You know, what we've done is, we've taken the west side, the northwest side of the track, and where there's a natural hill built in right now, we normally have signage from local businesses and other companies that support the track, we would separate that in the center by about 30 or 40 feet, and then have a screen there. So, this is now, we're going into our fourth week of being open for motocross practice events, and what we do in coordination with our agreement with the Board of Health, is we mark the sandy pit area each week with painted lines, and what it does is, it keeps the social distancing between the vehicles as they park to prepare themselves to go out on the track. We would do the same thing, and I submitted a, not a very good drawing, but one that gives you an idea of how we would situate the same social distancing for the vehicles as they enter into the west area, the pit area. So, you know, it's very much in keeping with what we put together in our proposal for the Safe to Ride program for the track itself. Now, it'll be for the public. All of the audio will be done by FM radio from our transmitter, and the Civic Fund group, the Southwick Civic Fund group, has assured us that they'll have the proper volunteer staff to keep this thing running, and of course, we'll be there as well.
Great. Has everyone seen the drawing?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so what's next procedurally for this, Carl?
I think you would just want to have it reviewed by department heads to make sure that it's something that's for that location, but I mean, this is an issue that's happening in every community, they need to have outlets to have entertainment, and it's gonna be a lot outdoors, just like you've expanded dining, so obviously, if the Board in, you know, agreement and principle, then it should just be reviewed by, you know, probably the building inspector, as the zoning enforcement officer, to make sure that it's okay.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think this is a fundraiser, and it's just a little bit different, it's just gonna be every Friday night for several weeks, but it's an opportunity for, to bring some entertainment to our community, and also to act as a fundraiser. So, I'm willing to make a motion that it be approved pending the review that the CIO has asked for, and authorize the Chairman to sign off.
If you don't mind, guys, I'll speak up real quick. I'm president of the Southwick Civic Fund, so I'm gonna act as that person, not as a select person. There's eight events scheduled for the motocross track, it's probably gonna be every other week, it wouldn't be every Friday, we don't wanna use the field, but the actual wall is temporary, it's actually a mobile truck, so our thought process was to have host events there. The Westview Brewery reached out, they would like to do four events in the fall-up on Deer Hill, depending on if it's slippery or not. They're licensed differently than the WIC is, and then we had thought about doing one or two down at the lakes, holding dock area, and maybe doing Jaws or something like that. So, it is an idea of fundraising. Well, I just, because they can pull up with their boat, and they can go on PayPal, make a donation.
They did it at Babs last year.
Oh, did they? Beautiful.
They did Jaws, yeah.
Yeah, so our screen is 20 by 35 feet when we're done, when it folds out of the truck. I think it's a win-win. We'll do fireworks, we're trying to raise money for fireworks, of course, but between our Thanksgiving, our Christmas, and quite honestly, there's enough nonprofits in town, be it the Food Pantry and a few others, we might be able to actually raise money for them, too, and they could come help us with the volunteer side. So, Rick was gracious enough, I've talked to Rick for four or five years about a drive-in theater, every time I look at that flat lane, it drives me nuts, and then once we figure out we could actually do it mobile, it just made more sense, and then, of course, with the pandemic and things going on, people are just dying to go out and look. The Governor did allow drive-ins to start, I've been constantly talking to the Board of Health, she's on board, and we'll follow every rule and regulation she wants us to. Thank you.
So, there's a motion on the floor, I'm assuming you're going to, do you want to make a second, or you want to abstain from this?
I'm gonna abstain from it, just to be safe.
Very well. So, then I'll second the motion, because I think it's an excellent idea, and thank you for doing it. Thank you, Rick, as well, for making the facility available as well. Roll call vote. Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Fox, aye.
Joe Didi abstains.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And before I leave, John, congratulations.
When I start coming up ideas, I wish one of you would just tell me to shut up, so this doesn't continue.
No, this is awesome, man, we've got the Thanksgiving, now we've got Jaws, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna shut you down, so anyway.
Before I sign off, I'd like the opportunity to congratulate John on his election, and I'm hoping that maybe you can meet us at the track sometime and get a feel for what's going on. You know, we bring a lot of business into the area, and your support is certainly paramount in our success.
How should I, thank you very much, and please, how should I get in contact with you?
Rick@thewick338.com. R-I-C-K at the WIC, T-H-E-W-Y-C-K, 338.com, and drop a note to me, and I'd love to have a conversation with you.
Rick@thewick338.com.
Thanks, John.
You'll have an email tomorrow. Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, could I just point out that our good Senator is on the agenda for 6:15, and I didn't know if he wanted to take this time to add to what he's already said, I know he's a busy person, gotta represent 11 different communities.
Southwick first, so there you go. The floor is yours, sir.
You know, I have to, the other day at the meeting outside, I have to comment on how impressed I was with Joe, and how he was just moving that microphone along, it was, I was getting, I felt like I was getting a workout just watching him, so kudos to you on that. Great job. No, I mean, I kind of said it, I just, I really want to convey to everybody that I'm here to represent, and Doug, I'm not sure who just said it, but 11 cities and towns, but as I said on the campaign trail, I'm gonna say it now again, I'm going to represent all the communities as if I live in those communities, so I just can't convey enough. I'm so glad Rick just reached out right there, and I just look forward to coming to Southwick, hearing about the community more. I mean, I've spent my entire life driving through it, now I have the honor of representing it, so I really wanna take that job and give it as much thought and deliberation as it so rightly deserves. So, when issues come up, you know, I know way back when, when I was a candidate, and I don't even remember when that was now, about a year ago, I think, we had that little sit-down, if you will, and we talked about the lakes, some of the issues up there, I just really want to convey to folks that I want this line of communication to be open, and if there is an issue with the state or something you want to run by me, you know, call me, text me, reach out to me, however you want to do it, yeah, that's really it. So, I guess if anybody has any, well, I don't want to say if anybody has any questions, I don't want to tell you how to run your meeting, but please reach out to me, it's an honor, and I look forward to it. So, obviously, if anybody has any questions for me, and that's appropriate on this venue, glad to answer them.
Good. Congammon road issues will be on your email tomorrow morning when you wake up from Mr. Steinhardt. We're getting tortured left and right over the state, the funding, what they did or didn't say they would do, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's turning into a goddamn nightmare. That shouldn't have happened. But yes, we will look you up. Thank you.
Carl? Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait for the email? I want that at 6:00 in the morning. About 6:00 AM.
We're up at 4:00, boy.
There you go. I like your style. All right, Congammon, I'm just gonna flag it as Congammon.
Thank you.
You got it.
John, question on Chapter 90 monies, where do you think the Senate's gonna come down?
I think it's gonna be, well, we already did, so we passed, so the Senate, two weeks ago, we voted on 300 million, and obviously, you saw the House with the 200 million, so there's gonna be some back and forth there. Now, you go back to when I was in the House, it's kind of weird, I'm taking all of these votes as a House member, then I'm taking them again in the Senate. We had a revenue package that I just wasn't a fan of way back in March, prior to COVID, gas taxes, new fees, all that stuff, so I had a real problem with that, because it was gonna really whack western Massachusetts, so I voted against it. So, now I move over to the Senate, and we take up a 90 bill, and it's 300 million without the tax increases, so I can tell you where I am, I hear it loud and clear how much you guys need that money. I like the Senate's bill. One of the cool things about being in the Senate now, I can bash the House, so I'm all for the $300 million amount, and I know that, you know, whether it's Congammon or anything else, that the road that is, Chapter 90 is a big part of what I hear from, on this listening tour, if you will, that I've been on, Chapter 90, if it's not the first thing, it's the second things out of, second issue out of folks' mouths. So, for me, you can never have enough Chapter 90 money coming back to our cities and towns, for that matter, Chapter 70 as well. So, the hope is that, you know, like most conferences, we meet somewhere in between, I hope it's closer to the Senate number.
John? Thank you. And remind the good Senator that Southwick, of your 11 districts and other districts outside of your areas, voted the best place to live in the Pioneer Valley last year, and we aim to keep up that moniker going forward with your help, so again, congratulations on your victory, and we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, please, please don't hesitate to reach out in anything, so thanks for letting me come on here today, and hopefully, I'll be seeing you all really, really soon.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, sir. Award fiscal year 21, DPW annual bids for various categories of work and services, and I see Mr. Brown is in attendance. Hello, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, how are you today?
I'm fantastic. How are you?
How do you want to go through this? You want me to go through each item? There's several items, here, we can go one at a time? You want to do that?
Sure.
Blanket reportable?
Is there anything notable that we need to go over here that's big changes from last year?
No, I think all the players are the same, are very similar to what you've seen in the past. I think what's notable here is the increase in pricing over last year. Most of these categories went up, in my mind, pretty significantly. I'm not sure the reason why. COVID-related, it could not be, but in general, the, you know, the industry, prices in construction are going up, so I think that's the big takeaway from this discussion. As far as the names, like I say, the names are very similar to what we had in the past, all good contractors who worked with, had very well, good experience with all of them. So, do you have any specific questions you want to go over?
Not for me, from the Board?
No.
Joseph?
I can't find my back, but I'm sure it's fine. Oh, there it is, guardrails, and yep, I'm fine.
So, do we need, you need a motion for that, to award the fiscal year 21 annual bids for various categories of work and services? So, that includes the heavy equipment bid, correct? And then the, which was your memo dated June 17th, and then another memo from the 17th of the annual bids for borrow material, guardrails, line striping, et cetera, correct?
Sure.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I will make the motion for all the DPW annual bids.
Russ Fox will second it.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, can we ask the DPW Director a couple of questions before we lose him?
Oh, absolutely.
Randy, what's our plan of action for roads, you know, schedules?
Well, that's what I want to talk to you about, so we've got a couple of things. First of all, we got the projects that we talked about last year. Depot Street is complete, the sidewalks are done. The contractor started working on Nicholson Hill Road, or will be starting on Nicholson Road this week. We've got that road laid out, they've got some construction equipment on site. And I'm told that as soon as they're done on Nicholson Hill Road, they're gonna move over to Tammy Lane and Jockey Circle. So those are all in the works. As far as new projects, another thing I want to talk to you about, so town meeting was kind enough to support a million dollars for paving projects for FY '21. I certainly have some ideas where we could put that dollars towards, and I'm sure you do as well. Last year, we held a work session, and we kind of combined all of our ideas, and we came up with a game plan. So I would assume you want to do the same thing this year, but I want to ask that question. And, you know, when do you want to have that, have that discussion?
We should have that sooner than later. We were gonna cover our summer schedule somewhere in here, right?
Yeah, July 7th is your next meeting, and you already have Jim Mazer coming in on the ADA plan, so you could add that to it.
Mr. Brown, does that work for you?
Yes, it does, yep.
So let's get it on the agenda for July 7th during the regular meeting to kind of go through this, is that all right?
Does that answer your question, Mr. Fox?
It does, thank you, Randy.
Great.
One more question, though.
Yeah.
The sidewalk on Depot, was there any consideration to doing the area between the congregational church and the Depot Court?
That's certainly a situation, we didn't have funding for it to do last, you know, with this first round. We can talk about doing that if you'd like. There are certain other locations where I think sidewalks are necessary. I will tell you that that sidewalk that we just installed costs about $90,000 for 800 feet.
Wow. That there's some grant monies that might be available for additional sidewalk work, is that right, Carl?
I did send Randy that information from that state grant. A lot of those funds were gonna be used toward expanded dining opportunities, but there was also some room in there for sidewalks connecting economic centers.
Which that certainly does, from the rail trail right to our business district, so.
Right, that's right along the pathway. So, I mean, I think what we ought to do in the meantime is see if Randy can develop an estimate on what he thinks that section of linear feet would cost based upon his most recent bids and invoices.
It'd be greatly appreciated, having tripped in that area during the dark numerous times at church functions. Be greatly appreciated.
Does your walker get stuck, or?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Listen, I'm just the clerk.
No, no, listen, don't mess me up on the first night, all right? Wait till the July 7th, you can skewer me, all right? Good lord. So Randy, you'll look at that, and there was that, that was that thing that just came out last week, Carl? That kind of emergency funding about, I think they were looking to do some stuff around dining and-
Right.
Changing roads to accommodate this new, new kind of abnormal, right? But-
Yes, I believe I had emailed a copy of that to you, Randy, too?
Yes, I've seen that, yep.
Correct, great.
So, Mr. Chairman, while we still, while we have Randy here, there is one other issue that does relate to the Bundalo Street design by Fussin O'Neill to award that. So if you have any questions on that, while Randy's still with us.
Questions from the board, I didn't, I didn't have any questions on it.
I didn't have any questions.
Someone want to make a motion to approve that, then?
I'll make a motion to approve this, Red.
I think it's for the Chairman to sign off, is that your motion, Chairman?
Yeah, for the Chairman to sign.
Russ Fox will second that.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Have we worked out a way for Doug to sign things from the bunker?
Dude, I'm out of the bunker.
No, 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 he comes through, and so the value of that-
Okay, okay.
Is $51,680. All right, so Randy, was that the other item you wanted to make sure we addressed?
Yeah, that's fine, yep, I was gonna stick on for a little bit anyway, so.
Yep, no, that's fine, just want to make sure that you're, we're taking care of all these things. And so that's the award and the signing, so Doug, there's gonna be a lot of documents for Doug to sign tomorrow.
Rank up the stamp, just kidding, I got it.
Okay.
Randy, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, just, I just want to point out that after we do identify the next round of projects, that I will have to go out to bid for those projects specifically. So the bids that we just awarded will not cover those future projects. So it's best to go out to bid and get specific projects, cost for specific projects. We find we get better pricing that way, just want to keep you looped on that.
And that's by bidding law, or you find that that's generally the case?
No, I think we're gonna get better pricing that way.
That's, okay.
We did that, that stretches our dollar, so.
Awesome, excellent. Next item on the agenda, first right of refusal for 38 Mortvining. I can just give a little bit of color, because I happen to be at, I think it was the conservation meeting last week, where they asked that we look at this parcel before we release our right of first refusal on this land. It's chapter land that they're asking to have come out. This is a parcel that is on the list of parcels that Ag had identified as one that they had wished to preserve. Obviously, at this moment, there's no funding mechanism to buy it. But Marissa and a couple other people were doing some checking with land conservancies and another organization as well, to see what, if anything, could be done. So interested to hear from the board, I think there was actually a copy of a memo, or there were some notes included with this release, probably Conservation Commission minutes or something, if I remember, regarding this issue. There's a note here from the Ag Commission, there it is. And from Bert Hanson, the Ag Chair, in your packet. It's the last or second to last parcel on Mortvining Road heading into Connecticut. And if you're going to Connecticut, it's on your left.
Right, you said it's four mays, right, Doug?
Well, what they're, correct, but they're gonna pull the 70 acres out of chapter and then carve off eight or nine formas in the front, and then they, they look like they're thinking about doing a subdivision or something in the back. But under the rules of chapter lands, the town has the right of first refusal. I don't even know that we've received the purchase and sale yet for the property. Didn't even know what the dollar amount that they're gonna get, because they're gonna carve off, it may be the estate, or the owners here are gonna carve off the formas piecemeal, but they, somebody would have to enter into that negotiation if that would be the case. But I think that, go ahead, Carl.
Was that identified in the Open Space Plan that was just recently finished and approved by the state?
It was not.
To acquire?
So that was one of my questions, back to them, and I don't know that we got, I, thank you, Russ, I did not know the answer to that. I know that from what Mr. Clark and Mr. Hanson had told me during the meeting, Ag Commission was asked for a wish list of properties preserved under the Open Space Plan, and Mortvining was high on that list. Now, whether it made it into the Open Space Plan, I don't know, I haven't read the final report.
I think that list was, that list was one that we asked for, Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
Because we wanted to narrow down what were the top priorities, and that's where we ended up spending all that money on the North Pond land.
Correct.
Which is now a bonding issue. I think if I read the letter from the Ag, is, you know, there's also some, some issues of the land not being farmed for a while, things of that nature. So that might not even be an APR request, if I read it correctly.
That's correct, it's not eligible for APR at the current time, from the meeting last week.
Right.
But I figure, subject to your approvals, that we could at least give this a couple of weeks for Ag and Concom to beat the mat, to see what they can come up with. From a land conservancy like, I can't even say it, and-
Kestrel, Franklin Land Trust is who we did the North Pond, and Kestrel is the other land trust.
Yeah, I couldn't say it, thank you for saying it. And, you know, when Marissa had another potential avenue, so I figured that I don't see any harm in giving them two weeks to see what they can come up with. And in the meantime, maybe they could go and get the purchase and sale and find out what kind of dollars we're talking about here, because there, it looks to me like they're just gonna carve off and sell the formas, and then maybe do something with the backland, right? But once they do that, that process is in motion, and you can see the cutouts, I'm pointing at the screen. You can see the cutouts for the, you know, potential entries and exits from a subdivision between the lots.
Not a problem, Mr. Chairman, the board has 120 days under the statute.
Understood, but we tend to usually are expedient, more expedient than that with these, but I want to give those boards at least an adequate opportunity, if that's okay with our, with the Vice Chair and the Clerk.
I don't personally have any problems with giving them more time. I'd like to see the land, you know, any land we can preserve, especially agricultural land. But at the same token, it wasn't part of the Open Space Plan, and this wasn't something that was planned. And I'd hate to see us take the 120 days to where it could affect the owners of this property. So if your suggestion is to give them a couple of weeks, I have no problem with that.
We'll carry this to the July 7th agenda, and we'll communicate, same, Carl, to Bert, Marissa.
Sure, old business, okay.
Thank you. Vote to approve and accept the drug takeback annual grant.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the backland.
I gotta look at how much it was.
$1,380, I think?
$1,300, sir.
$1,300 smackers to the cops, they already have the check. I have a motion on the floor.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Carries unanimously. Review summer schedule for edits.
Yeah.
I say we don't meet on the 23rd of June.
The-
That's fine.
Nothing good will happen.
When we first created the election, the September 1st, Tuesday at 6:00 PM schedule, you'll see there's an attached document now with it, where there's gonna be the Massachusetts State Primary and State Election Schedule sets forth Tuesday, September 1st, as an election day. So the board, as a general rule, never meets on an election day, because it shouldn't. And so that would then have you consider either Monday, August 31st, or-
Tuesday, the 8th.
Well, Tuesday's the 1st, or September 2nd, so that'd be Wednesday, the 2nd. Because you're, you're still on an every other week then, so. Because you don't want to go the 8th, Doug, because then you wouldn't have met for three weeks.
So then Monday, the 31st of August?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Joseph, any word on the things that usually keep you busy September timeframe?
It's a hustle.
Okay.
I have no idea, we'll just roll with it, because who really knows? I don't have enough time to discuss what I've been told every which way.
Gotcha. But we have scheduled right now the 15th and 29th.
That's fine.
Okay.
I gotta be six feet away from somebody.
Hey, with this remote participation, it might work out.
Everybody going by the booth getting a malicious ice cream can say hi to us during the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a PVC, PVPC invoice number two, CDBG fiscal year 19 grant administration for $7,369.66.
I'll make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it.
And I thin, nope, it's everyone's gotta sign it. Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Fox, aye.
Okay, we have minutes of June 2nd. Which were the ones that were sent over this afternoon?
You already accepted the June 2nd minutes at the last, on the consent agenda, so I don't know why they listed them.
I'm just going by the agenda there, boss man.
Yeah, the minutes you got today were June 15th, the consent agenda.
I haven't had time to review them, has anyone had a chance to review them in detail?
Yeah, I did, I did, it just reflects your votes, you weren't really doing deliberations, it was a consent agenda.
Okay, I didn't say a motion to accept the minutes of June 15th.
Make that motion, Joe Diddy makes the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Fox, aye.
Great, and do we have a dollar amount for the payroll warrant?
Yeah. Payroll warrant, no, dollar amount?
And while she's looking that up, I'll acknowledge the payables warrant, 2031B dated 6:15, in the amount of $207,285.92.
I don't know if she heard you, Carl.
Cindy, do you have the payroll, you don't have the payroll warrant amount?
Yeah, because she got it on a sticky on her desk.
I guess we'll carry it till July 7th, or to our next meeting. Okay, next, old business. Award SFD Station Project Bid Recommendation by Russo and Barr. Town meeting passed the $1.1 million bond issue, and so we need a, probably a formal motion now to award the project, correct?
That is correct, you need to award the low bid of $929,500 to Silk Town Roofing Incorporated, per the recommendation of the architect. They were the lowest apparent bidder out of the seven, and they have all the experience, and we're in the process, based upon your previous meeting, where that contract is being put together for the Chair to sign.
Someone want to do that in the form of a motion?
So move, Joe Diddy.
Russ Fox, second.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And that's great, Carl, thank you for all your hard work getting that project to the finish line, and now we can start getting that place out of the rain.
Oh, the other thing I'll be doing in follow-up to that, and in concert with it, Mr. Chairman, is speaking to both Mr. Lawler and the other building commissioner candidate that we had interviewed from Granville, so that we can have the two of them act as the board's clerk of the work. Granville so that we can have the two of them act as the board's clerk of the works at the project, at the project site.
Okay. That's excellent. I'm going to go a little out of order and I also want to congratulate Vice Chairman Fox. We got certification of the open space and recreation plan. And our plan is good through December of 2026, when you get to do it all over again.
Talking about the clerk?
Yes.
I think he meant when I was vice chairman of the Open Space Committee.
I did. I did. He was the vice chair of that committee and, and it was like herding cats. So I think that's excellent work and congratulations on a job well done there to that entire committee to, to get that done.
Chairman, I, I'd ask you to consider, now that that work is done, is dissolving that committee and thanking them for their excellent work.
Well, I'll take that as a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And that's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And we'll ask Cindy to prepare the requisite certificates. Emergency rental, we'll let that one sit. Doesn't seem, I haven't heard any big call out for that, Carl, in our town.
I have not.
So if, if there's no objection, we can take it off.
Okay.
Update on 772-774 College Highway?
Cindy, you want us to fill us in? You got the emails on that? Want to unmute yourself?
She just re-muted herself.
Doug, can you unmute her?
I, yeah.
Cindy, College Highway, that's, what are they looking to be, another car license, right?
Yep, they were originally a car license. They're right next to the Sunnys that you issued a liquor license to. They used to be a car license dealership. It was owned by Slate years ago. And then they turned into a vape house. And I guess that's not working. So he wanted to go back to selling used cars.
Chairman? Question?
Please.
On the agenda, it says 772 and 774. An email I have is that's from the planning board that that's construction, proposed construction of commercial property at that location.
Correct. And I was just scratching my head as well. I think there's, I think there's some confusion as to which project we're talking about here. I'm going to look it up myself.
You're, you're right. You're right. That other one is a one is the, this one is that other zone change that happened for Dr. Walster to put up a 19,500 square foot building.
So this is just an FYI.
Yeah. Yeah, that's going through the planning board process now. In fact, the conservation is going to be going out for a site visit.
This is, this used to be the Dr. Legax place, right?
Well, the property, it includes south of the hash house
Yeah.
of Legax property. So it's going to clear that all out and tear it down. And then there's going to be three buildings there, including office space, retail and a mixed use on a second floor of the main building.
This is, okay, I get it.
It's the open field, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah. In front of Ross's old restaurant.
Yep.
What's that?
That was dating.
There was a zone change in that back corner.
Right. Okay.
So this is actually, am I still muted? This is actually my dentist. He presently has a office in, on the pages in Agua.
So this has nothing to do with the used cars that, we used to be the vape shop and then it was a car lot, then it was a vape shop. Now they wanted to be a car shop again.
I apologize, trust estate, but you will be getting.
Yeah, he had mentioned that they were going to come in. I remember seeing that on one board.
That, that did come in also on College Highway. And I think that's up near, what, 801, Cindy?
Yeah, right next to the Sunnys.
Sunny's right. The new, the gas station that just got renovated and opened up. So there will be another class two coming before the board for the board to decide the status of that location.
That's north of Sunny's, right?
No.
Isn't it right next?
Right next to it.
It's right south of it, right next door to it.
Going to West.
Oh, 801. All right, got it. So, all right. You know what? With all these Zoom meetings and going to so many of them, they all start to run together for me. I don't remember what I heard where anymore. All right. Green Energy Program with Mass D O E R. Thoughts from the board?
I, I would think we'd need follow-up meetings before we determined anything, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to carry this under old business for now?
I, I would appreciate it.
By all means.
Yeah, if this makes the clerk happy, let's do it.
Any other old business, Mr. Vice Chairman?
We, do you want to finish reorganizing the board on all those other action items above?
Not really, but I guess we have to. Where's that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we probably should do that. All right. I skipped that whole section to get to Senator Velez. Assignments to Capcom and LEPC. Joe?
What, what do I normally do?
Capcom.
I'm comfortable with that. What's LA, what's the other one?
Local Emergency Planning Commission.
That's a sleeper, huh?
The chairman has been doing an excellent job at that. Excellent job. I'd make that in the form of a motion that the Capcom and the, be assigned to Mr. Didi and LEPC to our excellent chairman, Mr. Moglen.
I'll make, I'll second. Get the bus running over that, Mr. Moglen.
Okay, that's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen says aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
And then warrant signatures delegation. Mr. Clerk, what's that?
I have been doing that for several years now, Mr. Chairman, and would be happy to continue doing that.
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, would you like to second his motion?
Yeah, he doesn't work as much as the rest of us. So yeah, I'll second that motion.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
Plus he's owning the senior center all the time due to his age.
Stop, stop, don't sell past the close. Cosign authority with member and CAO for hires below department head.
That's all you, Mr. Moglen.
Does a vote, Carl, is a vote of the board necessary for that to continue? Or we just continue with that as a matter of course?
Um, I, well, I think the, it's like anything else. The board can either vest that with the chairman, or if the chairman's work schedule doesn't permit him to regularly address and attend to those issues, he can delegate that to someone else.
Doesn't matter to me. Right now I can see how it works out. Right now that power is delegated to the chair and you. So the chair could further delegate on a whim.
That is correct.
An individual hire. Let's go. Let's keep it as is then.
Keep it like this.
So, okay, so those will be for you to come by and deal with me. Okay.
Sure. We're back to old business, I think, then.
Yep.
Carl, do you have any old business?
Uh, just the, the fact that we're in terms of the coronavirus that they, there was another Lieutenant Governor briefing today with Jeff Beckwith and the MMA. And, you know, the testing updates that you see every day in the situational awareness report that you get, that's going on. And they're hoping to be able to start getting at other, you know, other phases of reopening things. So they're going to be coming out with some more stuff soon. And one of those things they discussed in terms of the beginning of phase three was maybe small group people, concerts, small community type gatherings may be coming up soon in July. But I believe it's going to be maybe around July 8th where they're, or the 7th where they're discussing those things. So there's more coming next week as an update on that. Cause a lot of communities want to start having public events. But they got to make sure that we're far enough down the road where the, the test results will allow that to happen. And then in addition to that, as you recall, Doug, we had submitted a CARES Act grant in, at your consent agenda meeting on Monday, the 15th. You did vote to do all that emergency spending and so forth. And then you also voted to be in the future, accept any CARES grant funds that we had submitted, which could act as our 25% share. Whereas our ultimate 75% share will go to the MEMA. So those funds were already received by the town because the state received all the applications the week before and they awarded almost half of the funds within three days. And that was about $24,000 for us.
Great.
So, and again, that's only meant for cash flows to make sure that we didn't have to front those 100% out of all our funds. We were, at least got 25% covered now. But ultimately there will be a larger FEMA application through a disaster application form. So that'll be coming up in the future too.
Is that it for old business, sir?
Yep, for me.
Joseph?
Um, I have nothing for old business. The sidewalks look great. I got more compliments about the outside.
Marcus still there? Marcus, how do you like your sidewalk?
Yeah, Marcus gets to walk on them.
Uh, it's excellent. The people I've talked to coming by, they're very impressed with the work. Of course, that connection, that section that Mr. Fox mentioned near the congregational church is still hanging out, but hopefully that'll get done. And I'm glad I can get back in my driveway. Appreciate that, Randy, getting the, the guys back to fix it up.
Uh, Marcus, if you could hang a coffee can on the tree there, maybe a couple of people slug a dollar in there to help fund the next stage of those sidewalks, that'd be appreciated. Thanks.
Sounds good.
Quarters, nickels, doesn't matter.
That's up.
That's right. Uh, Mr. Fox, old business?
I would just like to make sure since we have the press here that it's well known that we, Town Hall has begun the process of opening up. People now have access to the town clerk and to the assessor's office. I know a lot of people have been calling me about purchasing their transfer station sticker and things of that nature. And I think this is the beginning. So people can now freely go in there to take care of some of their, their business.
With a mask on?
With a mask on.
Yes.
Yep.
And to that end, Carl?
White shirts going again?
There'll be, there's social distancing signs there. There's masks. Bombs are clean more frequently. And, and we're doing this all in concert with the, the guidance of the health director.
And to that end, also Joe and Russ and Carl and I have been working on the last couple of technical pieces to be able to hopefully have at least some of this board, or if not all of this board and other boards and commissions be able to start to meet again. At least for the board members in Town Hall in the next several, I hate to say next couple, several weeks as we work that out. And obviously right now we're not able to have the public in, inside the building yet, but as that happens, we'll be able to entertain that and still be able to allow remote participation as long as the governor's order allows.
Doug, what's your cat's name?
I can't say it right now. Right. Normally spooky the rescue cat, but always during a conference call, it's almost like she can sense it. Not the first time. And she'll be back, I guarantee it. Okay. New business. I got a big blank on my sheet here right now for new business. So Carl?
Uh, I just want to let you know that we will be submitting last version that you had been working on, on your goals and objectives list. Usually when the board reorganizes itself and gets through town meeting and the budget process, it then goes and looks at its own goals and objectives and it spends some time taking items off of it that it's completed as well as putting new initiatives that it wants to go forward with that are, some of which that will have been approved in the budget because your budget process is a collection of public policy positions. So you'll see that at your next meeting.
Excellent. Anything else?
That is it, sir.
Joseph?
Um, talking to Board of Health quite a bit lately. They want to relook at some of our licensing that we do and permits that come up yearly. She liked to call it more of a business packet than a Board of Health packet. So I'd like permission to work with her on that and have something redone again by the fall with more permits. If she was permitting, it goes out.
Is that something like to coordinate? Instead of having Board of Health do this and FIRE do this and this guy do that, we kind of haven't.
She's got some better ideas of how to skin that cat. And even the common Vic that technically belongs to the selectmen, but you get it upstairs at the Board of Health. And that really needs to be done before they get a Board of Health inspection realistically. Cause we may not care for something, I don't think we ever tied one, but who knows?
That is
So that brought a conversation. And so she liked to work on that. And I said, well, let me see if the board wants me to help you and we'll go from there.
Fantastic. No objection from myself. Mr. Fox?
No, good idea.
I don't know how she finds the time.
Oh yeah, she's doing a good job. I'm, I'm impressed. You know, jumping into the, the thick of things, right? And the only other thing I have is the movie that will be showing, the first movie, which I did not pick. I don't want that pressure, is the movie, and I've never heard of it, Sing. It's like a cartoon, adult, kid kind of thing.
S I N G, Sing?
Sing, yeah. It's, I don't know. I'm sure the right people do know that one.
I'm gonna have to go to my moderator for that one. Celeste, do you know that movie?
It's a kids movie slash adult movie.
I am not familiar with that movie. I'll look it up though. I'll let you know.
All right, that's your assignment. Okay.
I, I'm familiar with Sing.
Ah, that was my next call.
Is it okay?
It is okay. It's, I mean, kids like it, but it's got some adult, you know, humor adults would appreciate.
Oh, the old double entendre stuff.
Yeah.
Love that.
So, so it's tolerable for the grownups.
Perfect. So I will have to do a five minute stick. That's good.
What's the first date for that, Joe?
The first date is going to be, sorry guys, July 24th is a Friday night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is that it for new business for you, Joe?
Yeah, sorry. I'm done promoting.
Mr. Fox?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, appointments.
Yes.
It's that time of year again. I know that we've worked diligently over the past couple of years to try to get new people involved. We were very successful. We have a, a new moderator. So I, I hope that we can publicize that there are openings and encourage people to apply for these positions.
Absolutely.
As you know, we've been accused of reappointing the same people year after year after year.
Absolutely. And I think it's awesome that we have some new blood coming in. Absolutely. And I think it's awesome that we have some new blood coming in and would love to continue that trend, right? As there are vacancies and there are people that are, you know, leaving boards or coming from boards or what have you, we should absolutely continue that trend. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
I only have one item of new business in, I'm not sure if it was old business, but we'll call it new business. The High Speed Internet Subcommittee has met a couple of times during the pandemic, at least once, and they would like to have an appointment back in front of the Board of Selectment to present. So probably looking at the second meeting in July to give them a chance to present their survey data, their thoughts, what they've learned, and what would be any go-forward action regarding establishing broadband, competitive broadband in the town of Southwick.
Do you want that on the, you've already got two appointments on July 7th. Do you want that on that agenda? Or do you want it on the other one on the 21st?
I want to make sure it's okay with the rest of the board to schedule that, because I am the chair of that Subcommittee. So I would like their approval. But then it doesn't really matter which one of those dates. We can get it in either one.
I think, Mr. Chairman, it'd be good if we had it on the second one, because our time with Randy normally is a lot longer.
Very well. So that second one, Mr. Carl?
Okay.
That's all I got. Is there any other business before the select board this evening? If not, I will gladly accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
Very well. Excellent. Have a great evening, everyone.
You too.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.